Please for a moment of silence. Thank you, and Ron, would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're up. First up is roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
David Hockmeister.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Oberton.
Here.
Richard Bean.
Present.
Greg Richman.
Here.
Chris Wetstein.
Here.
Okay, no tabled items, new business approved minutes. The regular meeting September the 2nd. I have those. And the budget session on September the 2nd.
What's that?
The final review, we do not have the budget meeting of August 17 yet because they were so long.
Right.
So that'll come later, so. I've read both of them, did anybody find anything of those two of September 2nd?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, September 2nd minutes and the final review minutes, September 2nd by Ron. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor? And seven of us, thank you. And next up is economic development business, confirming resolution designated ERA Kaiser Aluminum. What is the resolution number?
Resolution number would be 2021-13.
13.
Good evening, Steve Ollie, Economic Development. As Greg said, phase in is a two-phase process. First phase was last month. We had the preliminary resolution which passed 6-0. We are here for the confirming resolution for Kaiser Aluminum Warwick County. It's a giant new investment here in our community, nine figures, a new coating line out there. We are thrilled that they are here. We're thrilled with the one, the big investment they made for the rolling mill, and they're coming right out of the gate and investing in our community. We couldn't be happier, none of the details changed from what you guys had last month. I am certainly happy to go over any of the project or any of the questions that you have. We're joined tonight in the audience from the operations manager at Kaiser, Evan Quinley, communications leader, Carrie Flugel, and also Zach Weinstein, who's with EY, who's been a consultant for them, has been working with Warwick County, helping us with the size and scope and timeline of this project.
Counsel, any questions or discussions? I'm hoping for a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 2021-13.
Second.
Motion by Rick and seconded by David, and do I need to read the title now?
Yes.
This is Warwick County Council, resolution number 2021, a resolution confirming the declaration of an ERA Economic Revitalization Area for Real Property and Personal Property Tax Phase-In, Kaiser Aluminum Warwick LLC. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's all seven of us, 7-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, under Economic Development, is a salary ordinance for analyst, three-day vacation payout according to the handbook. And it is $476.26.
Motion to approve.
Motion by David to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's all seven of us, 7-0.
Thank you.
Now we have circuit court business. We have transfers from contractual services, $2,510, to computer equipment, $2,510. And there is another transfer, I called it 3B.
Yeah, from contractual services to supplies for $384.
Do we want to do both of them all in one?
Yeah.
Do both.
Okay, you'll make the motion.
384.
384.
I'm motion to approve both transfers.
Motion by David to approve both 3A and B. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? All those in favor? 7-0, thank you. Prosecutor business.
Prosecutor called me and was not going to be able to make it tonight. And he said the additional appropriation is needed for jury trial for expert witness fees that will be taking place.
That amount is $3,000 for expert witness fees. An additional appropriation.
So moved.
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's all seven of us, thank you, 7-0. Next up is sheriff's business. We have an additional appropriation for utilities, $18,000, that's under jails' budget.
I know Waters went up a bunch, is there other things that went up too, or just more usage?
Sure, Paul Cruz, Chief Deputy Sheriff, the, we transferred earlier in the year 15,000 out of that line item into building to cover some other things because usually they have some left in utilities. Utilities have gone up, of course, and so now we're, we're short, now we did not, whenever it came back for reimbursement on that 15,000, we moved out. We just kind of robbed Peter to pay Paul at that point to get by and see what we had.
That's a no-no.
We wanted to try to see what we can do though, I mean naturally throughout the year, we do try to do that, just manage the money that we have on hand and not come begging for more unless we need it. 'Tis the season now, we're getting down to where different lines are starting to run out, so I'm sure we'll be back next month with something else.
That's promising.
I don't really know that, I'm just, that's just speculation, I know that some of the lines are getting low, but I know we're, we're going to be able to move some stuff, but.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, the motion by David and second by Rick. To approve the utilities additional appropriation of $18,000. Any discussion? All those in favor? 7-0. Next up is a salary ordinance for dispatcher, $3,401.2, and dispatcher, $928.8. Those are of course handbook items.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any discussions? All those in favor? Seven of us, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Health department. Additional appropriations.
These are handbook, also.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad and second by Dave. These are handbook additional appropriations issues. Data manager, $1,492, sanitarian, $2,119, administrative assistant, $1,599, for a total of $5,210. And would we want to add the salary ordinance into that?
I'll make that, I'll make that an addendum to the motion.
So we do both A and B.
Yes.
Sorry for jumping the gun. That's my fault, I should have read B also. We'll do the transfer separately. All those in favor? 7-0. And then 7 and 6C is a transfer from animal control expense, $1,002, to communication animal control.
Motion to approve.
Motion by David, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any discussion?
Is this the same thing we did last month that goes now they're putting it in categories?
I can't answer that, I just know Aaron actually submitted this transfer to be placed on the agenda.
He doesn't have a way of explaining it.
It's just they're negative.
I need, let's see, did I get the motion, yeah I did. David made the motion, second by Chris. Any discussion further? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, oh Rick, two, six, all those opposed to one, and that's 10, 6 to 1. Now, extension business. Transfer from part-time, $6,156.09, to office manager, $6,156.09.
Carla Kinwell, Purdue Extension, and we are making this request because our office manager is set to retire in January, and we would like to go ahead and onboard a new person so that she can do some training with them, because the new person will have to learn three separate computer programs.
And on 7B, you've got the salary ordinance of office manager training of $35,569. So.
It's just a second position, I mean that's the total amount, but that's not the total amount, of course they'll get paid through the end of the year. It's what the total salary is for the position.
Okay, that's what the person is making now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Carla, why do you figure it's going to take two months to train them?
Because of the amount of programs that they have to learn. Honestly, it'll take a full year beyond after Kim retires to have the whole grasp of
Motion to approve.
And would you motion to approve both of those amounts?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Brad to approve the salary ordinance and the transfer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, was that Chris?
No, Ron.
I'm sorry.
Close.
Any discussion?
Well, we usually don't do two months, didn't we do the court reporter a month?
Yes. I, I said, you know.
Use your memory, that's all I'm asking.
No, I, okay, in their defense, they're doing it by transfer, they already had the money in place to do it, and weren't needing an additional appropriation.
We're not asking for an additional.
So therefore, I thought if they needed two months and they had the money, then you guys might approve it, so. But I understand, yes, usually you do a month, but.
Any further discussion?
Can't you even part-time, put them on as far as part-time, even now, since you got the money and learn the programs and help out on other stuff?
I, we could, whatever you guys tell us we need to do.
If I may, Amanda Mosman, Purdue Extension, our office being so different, we don't do things month in and month out, like some of the offices with ag having its own program, health and human sciences, 4H, each of us have our own program, Purdue has their policies, county has their policies, it's extensive. So two months is, is not a hard ask, and we would appreciate it, because Kim, Kim is a heartbeat of our office, she keeps us in line. The more organization we can get in place ahead of time, we will lose less steam with the transfer.
Okay, we have a motion in place. Motion by Brad, second by Ron. Any more discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, all those opposed, three, four to three, and the three were David, Rick, and Ted. That's both of them.
Thank you.
Reassessment business. We have additional appropriation for reassessment, deputy mapping, $5,122, health insurance, $5,000, and FICA, $758, for a total of $10,880.
Good evening, Debbie Stevens, Warwick County Auditor. This position, we've received notice from Shannon McDaniel, I'm sorry, Shannon Woolsey. She works in reassessment, mapping, her salary is budgeted out of reassessment. She is retiring in January after many, many years with the county. Her job is very technically driven, it does require a specific skill set, and GIS is used by thousands of people, if not on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, and keeping the mapping up to date is critical. The person who would replace her has to have training from, from WTH, who does our GIS. And that would mean someone coming into the office, spending time with, someone in our office is interested in the position, they have some basic skills, but they would need more in-depth training. But the thing is, she'll go out in January, and we would need some time to get someone up to speed so that when she goes, we don't have a gap in keeping our GIS mapping up to date. For, I mean, it's used by everyone in the county, businesses and realtors and just citizens in general use the GIS mapping. So I gave Crystal a start date of 10/11 to calculate the insurance, which I don't have a position to hire a head to put this person in, so that's not even realistic, that's Monday, and we have to know that we have the funds appropriated before we can even interview and make a promise to someone to backfill the deputy position that we would have to fill. But we really need our current employee freed up some to be able to devote himself to the more in-depth training that, that that job would require. Sarah Redman is actually the custodian of the reassessment fund, but we talked about this, we talked about the individual who would replace Shannon, and she's in agreement, and she's in agreement with also the extra funding for what will amount to maybe five or six weeks. That's if we could hire someone right away. So the 10,000 at this point, as of today, is probably, well, I know it's overstated, but.
Counsel, comments, motions?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Rick to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ted. Now, questions and discussions?
So how, how far off are you thinking this is, just a couple, or 10, 8, 80?
It'll, it'll be less from there. It won't be more, it'll be less from there. Now, of course, we would have the first part of January, that's a 2022 issue I would have to come back for. But, I mean realistically, I don't even know if we could identify a qualified candidate within the next week or two, get them onboard, hopefully by the end of October, so then you're only talking about, I think, three payrolls after that. Basically, November, and then there's just a few weeks left in December for the 2021 budget.
Does Shannon have an assistant working in there?
She does not. Paul, in our office, he's, works in the transfer deed department, and so he, he's, he's really gained a lot of skills since he came to work in that office and in the role that he's in, he has a lot of skills, but they are not like different levels in GIS and to the extent that, that Shannon, as far as her skill sets, they're not, they're not as, as in-depth. They're not required for what he does in the role he's in, so.
Brad, to answer your question, three payrolls would be 3,842 instead of 5,122.
Now, am I understanding it right, that this is, this is an additional appropriation for the funds that are not available?
It is.
And with the one before that, they were just moving money around, right?
Right.
Now, I'll say also though that the GIS mapping, I think, is extremely important, I really do. I think that people almost expect it to be instantaneously updated, you know?
And it is, as much as we can.
Yeah. But I just wanted to clarify that one, one thought there.
Is the health insurance and FICA in line? Since it won't be.
I mean, if you appropriate the health insurance, it will be called to the health insurance fund. You know, the FICA might, it probably is going to be a little bit over, but it would just stay in the, stay in the reassessment fund if it weren't spent.
So if it's over budgeted a little bit, it's not going to hurt anything, is what you're saying?
Right, as long as she won't transfer it somewhere else.
We'll think that'll happen.
I don't have authority over that fund.
I'm a little, little confused, certainly, if it's an assessor's employee, is it not, is it not your employee?
Well, it, she is housed in our office, and the work that she does is, things we do then goes to her, things that are recorded, things, transfers that are made, it all kind of feeds into what she does. She's been in our office since the building was built.
Since the building was built, yeah, because I know right where she's at, too.
Yes, and so we, I do supervisor, and.
Budget-wise, it's not, it's under you?
No.
No, budget-wise, budget-wise, it's under Sarah, which Sarah is in support of it. And the reason for that, Ron, is, is back when it was moved to reassessment, because reassessment had the funds to pay for it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
This is a little history I'm getting.
It's, yeah, it's 1224, it's a different fund. Technically, the custodian of that fund is Sarah, as assessor, yes.
Another question, you said you have an employee who's thinking of taking this?
He's expressed an interest for the position.
If he expresses an interest, then you'll have to replace him.
And that's what this would, would help us with, he would be able to move in, well, he would, technically, he would still be a full-time employee with the county. Well, that's the purpose of this, I know it sounds strange. It would be a full-time temporary employee. So the position is just temporary until Shannon officially retires. It would go away, the, the position that you're appropriating for is not a permanent position, it's full-time. It would be extremely difficult to hire someone with part-time, you know, part-time pay, part-time position, and in hopes that they would go into another position, and there's so much training involved for this job that we want to invest in someone who's interested in the job, really has a lot of the qualifications for it. So it makes sense to put our training into the current employee and then fill his position.
Somewhere in.
Yeah.
Agree with that, that's not, yeah. Sure do. Okay, I think that answers all I've got. I think it's helpful knowing that it's not permanent.
Right.
I think that's very helpful to know.
Yes, it would be just for the time we have left in 2021, and then we'd have the same situation for a few weeks in 2022.
Any further counsel discussion?
So Crystal, there's, does that have a separate levy there to reassessment?
Yeah, reassessment has its own levy, yes.
Would we want to counsel change that from 5122 to 3842?
I would, I would think you would, if that's.
The motion was for 5122 there. If we go back to the original motion, so it would have to be amended. So, Rick, you made the motion, would you like to amend that?
Actual numbers? Yeah, we'll take the actual numbers and whatever that would be.
$3,842 instead of $5,122.
Just want to make sure we get it right, so we don't not have enough money.
That was three pay periods.
It all stays in cash.
That was three pay periods, or three pays, yeah.
But what if I can hire them a week before that lasts? That's all I'm saying, is the money will stay in cash for, for the reassessment fund. If, you know, FICA, if anything is transferred, then it would stay in those funds.
Yeah, because the only place it could be transferred is in reassessment.
I'll just keep my motion like it is, because the funds will be put back in reassessment anyway. You know, if she could hire someone quickly.
I'd love that.
Well, just to clarify, the motion by Rick, second by Ted, is deputy mapping, $5,122, health insurance, $5,000, and FICA, $758, for a total of $10,800. Any more discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four.
Five.
Five.
I think.
And the post is Brad and David, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Five to two.
Let me just clarify, if you give me just a second, just to kind of explain that, I feel like we're kind of, now, the other one with the, the Purdue Extension office was a little different because the funds were there. You know, they were in part-time, and they were just basically switching them over, but I feel like we're getting into some kind of unusual predic, or not predicament, but an unusual pattern of if we know somebody's leaving, we like, we're like training and pulling all this additional appropriation for training money and different things, and not just for what just happened, but I know we've done this a couple of times in the last couple of months, and, you know, if, if any other situation, if I came in tomorrow and put in my two weeks' notice and I'm gone, you know, you're just going to have to figure out what's going on at that position, and somebody else should have probably been cross-trained or should have understood. And I'm not directing this at any one particular person, but, you know, we're, these situations are, I don't know, they just seem to be a little unusual that we're hiring people and using, expending additional money that's not necessarily available, or it's not like it was just a transfer from one fund to another. I don't know, I just want to kind of voice my concern about that, because normally, hey, somebody puts in their two weeks' notice, they're out the door, and then you gotta kind of figure that out from there, so that's my thought.
On that, Brad, I'm, you know, I just said that because it kind of goes along the same thing I had, only in a separate way. Is, is that this is an unusual situation, and they're dealing with a high-tech training, you know, a high-tech employee that needs to be able to do this mapping. So better to train them now while you can, as opposed to wait till the seat's empty.
Well, the thing is.
Then we have to turn on void on something that needs to be updated immediately.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, they've got somebody in the position currently for another two months, and I would like to think that within, you know, 60 to 70 days, that you could probably do a little golf training, hopefully at least get that person, maybe not exactly trained as well as he is.
No, I mean, I put it for both of them.
It's not, like, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly what this is, but it's probably like not network engineering or anything, I would think, but, anyway. That's my two cents, I take your point.
Sure, I, yeah.
I want to clarify real quick, Rick, your motion was for both 8A and 8B, the salary ordinance too. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. The salary ordinance is 33291. Next up. I did have something from the judge, is that not on the?
This, that's what this, I mean, is this the one you're talking about?
Drug court, yeah.
Yes, yes, okay, so what happened is I budgeted health insurance in the drug court fund, but for so many employees, okay? Well, one of those employees is paid. fund, but for so many employees, okay? Well, one of those employees is paid for a grant, and it should not have been budgeted in the health insurance fund. But also, the grant can't legally pay for the health insurance. So therefore, we need to make an additional appropriation into the commissioner's health insurance line item, and then do a repost of where we paid that out of the drug court fund.
Okay.
That was helpful.
It said commissioners, and that threw me off a little bit.
Yes, that's why, because that's where the general insurance is paid for.
So, can I ask a question about that before we go?
Let me read it first. Additional appropriation, commissioners, health insurance for $15,582.
And so, I got a question. Is that a position that we had always budgeted through the grant funding, and now the grant funding, I know it's just not able to pay it, but it's not like the grant funding disappeared. It's not one of those scenarios?
No. We have typically budgeted that health insurance from the commissioner's fund. When I calculated them last year, I counted that employee.
I got you. Thanks for clarifying, because I was just wanting to make sure it wasn't one of those grant funds where the funding had went away, and then now we're left trying to figure it out, even though we'd said, hey, that if the grant funding was gone, we weren't going to cover it. So, I was just making sure we weren't going down that rabbit hole. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? At 7-0. Thank you. Next up is appointments to Economic Development Advisory Council, EDAC, and Redevelopment Steve, would you like to come up and address the board?
Sure. Steve Rowley, Economic Development. We have an open seat due to the passing of Howard Evans, who has been on our boards for a long time and made a really big impact in our community. I always like to keep a list of three or four people if we do have an opening, whether it's a council appointment or a commissioner's appointment. I try to look at the diversity of our board and want to add some voices to that diversity. We have a lot of people on our board in healthcare. We have a lot of people on our board in finance. We have a lot of people on our current board that are in real estate or construction. Those are kind of the three sectors we have. And so, I put some different folks on the list, but I handed to Greg when he asked for some recommendations. I would say the person that rate, that came to the top was Courtney Tenbarge. Courtney's currently the president of Warwick Trails. She was very involved in starting the Warwick Parks Foundation, which is doing great things in our community. So, she kind of comes from the quality of place, the nonprofit sector. She has a day job as well, but I think she brings maybe a little bit different voice, a little bit different perspective, which is always welcome. I really value our boards. They provide me with a lot of guidance. They have a lot of different expertise and experience. Courtney happens to be Howard's daughter as well. I think she inherited his passion for Warwick County, but she definitely has her own opinions and is her own person. She's done fantastic with our trails and our parks, and I think we've all been pushing towards quality of place here in Warwick County. We know that we've made big strides in what makes people want to move and live in our community. So, I personally will just add my two cents. I would certainly value her opinion on our boards, but at the end of the day, it's your guys' decision.
And she would fill the position to the end of his term, then? I don't remember when the end of his term is.
And I don't have that.
I don't have it.
Buried in my briefcase somewhere.
I was working on him last week, but I, yeah, I don't know.
But that's correct.
So whoever it is would serve until the end of his term, and then we would reevaluate again. Okay, so that's Courtney Tenbarge. C-O-U-R-T-N-E-Y-T-E-N-B-A-R-G-E, I believe.
Yep, capital B.
Capital B, okay.
In the barge, yep.
All right, are there any others?
Well, if you're taking nominations, and I beat around the bush for the last couple of weeks trying to think of someone that would fit in as far as economic development and help us with industry in the county. Finally, I spoke with Dave Tally. Of course, he's retired, but he is a real estate agent specializing in commercial real estate. And of course, he's next city councilman, too, was, as far as involved that side of economic development. And I spoke with him, and he would be glad to serve.
Do we have other real estate people on the boards?
We have people in real estate and construction on the boards and have been on our boards. So, we do have that sector a little bit. We have a lot more finance and a lot more healthcare on our boards. And yourself and Ron and Rick, who have been on our boards, you know most of the individuals that, that serve on there.
And I think there's one lady that's on economic development.
We only have one female on our board. She's from healthcare, Lynn from Deaconess.
Yeah, Deaconess Gateway, and none on the RDC, because all.
Correct.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this till next month to give the council some more time to think about it.
I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
There's no big hurry, right, Steve?
You guys can fill that position when you like.
I think we'd like, I'd like some more time to think about it.
Okay, so a motion by Ted to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's see, Ted and Rick, table. All right, any further discussion?
I'd like to just confirm that I'm, I'm sure you talked to Courtney Tenbarge.
Actually, I'm sorry, we can't discuss a table.
Yeah.
Amendment to procedure, excuse me. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor of tabling it, raise your hand. All those opposed tabling it? Okay, it'd be five opposing and two far. The five opposing were David, myself, Brad, Chris, and Ron. So, we're back to discussing the two that are on here now.
I want to make a motion to nominate Courtney Tenbarge. I feel it's necessary that we fill it immediately, because the economic development is doing some really good things, and we are pushing hard to make Warwick County as good as it can be. So, in my opinion, as being a member sitting on that board, we need to fill it as quickly as possible, and Courtney would be a great asset to it and help the diversity of the committee.
Okay, so I guess we can take a vote on these. What would be your procedure?
If you're looking, going to do the nominations again, nominate David Tally.
Okay.
You have a procedure, a second, or have you?
Huh?
You don't need a second?
Don't need a second for these nominations, no. Just put the names out, and then we'll take a vote and call each name. Okay, the first name was Courtney Tenbarge. All those in favor of Courtney Tenbarge, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. And all those in favor of David Tally, raise your hand. That's two, okay. And the two in favor of David were Brad and David Hockmaster. Ron. Chris, Greg, and Rick.
And one abstention.
For Courtney. Who is the abstention?
Ted.
Ted, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that is very nice for part of Howard's legacy to have his daughter come in there.
Are we going to contact Courtney, or is that Steve's position to do that?
You want to do that for us?
I do, I think.
Since you know her.
Is that appropriate?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Okay, next up is additional appropriation, legal services, $6,496. And that, of course, is due. You have the letter of the hours here that was spent, numerous hours over and above the normal job of being our council attorney.
Motion to approve is the 6496.
Motion to approve by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad.
So you actually, you actually did some work on this?
I did.
Quite a few.
I was on the phone and texting him constantly. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all seven of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a transfer from other services, $1,200, to computer equipment, $1,200, and that is counsel.
Yes, that is for a laptop, because mine went kaput.
You didn't mean so hard on it.
It is, I don't even know how old it is. It was really old.
You couldn't fix that or?
Yeah.
Was it over three years?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, really old.
Most of them nowadays, okay.
Motion to approve transfer.
Motion by Brad, second by Rick. Or was that motion by David? I'm sorry. I heard two seconds.
One of the seven.
You can have it.
One of the seven. Take your pick.
So who made the motion?
I put David and Rick.
David and Rick, okay.
Is there, is there an award for like motions or anything? I feel like you have like by the time when one of the.
Ah, we try to spread it out, don't we? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? 7-0. Thank you. Other business to come before the council at this part of the meeting?
Nothing?
Nobody's on the sign-in.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ron and second by Rick. All those in favor? Now, do we have to wait to a certain time for the second?
Yeah, it's advertised at 7:00.
7 o'clock?
Yeah, I was really hoping he was going to say now, but.
It's what he gets paid at.
He's waiting for something.